Folks getting an echo.
Yeah, if everyone would please mute if you're not speaking, that should eliminate that problem, Mr. Secretary.
All right. Thank you, Claude. Thanks, everybody for following those instructions. Would like to go ahead and call the virtual meeting today of the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation Board of Trustees to order. Thanks, everybody, for taking the time to be here and for joining us today. As you all know, from this lengthy pandemic we've been in, we've got kind of a little preemptulatory stuff we need to get through just to make sure that the meeting is legitimate and in accordance with what the General Assembly and the Attorney General's Office have told us that we need to do. So I appreciate your forbearance as we go over the virtual meeting rules and also some disclaimers before we get into the actual business of today's meeting, which should be pretty exciting since we get to actually talk about spending money on good projects. So just quickly, you know, as you all know, public bodies are prohibited from meeting electronically under FOIA, except for the emergency language. It was approved by the government in the General Assembly in April. It allows us to move forward. I'm going to review the provisions of that, but certainly you want to refresh everybody on how the meeting is going to work to allow full participation by board members, staff, and the public. And so just quickly, the meeting will be open for board comments at all times. And there's certainly some challenges with public comments. So rather than have it be just thrown completely open, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to make a comment, please do that in the chat box and we will address those comments as the time allows. Please, I just ask that everybody be patient and with us as we're working through this. Again, just going to read this kind of lengthy introduction language to make sure that we're above board with all this. So here we go, Chapter 1283 of the 2020 Acts of the Assembly known as the Caboose Bill includes language addressing the ability of public bodies to conduct electronic meetings without the need for one being present in a single physically physical location, otherwise known as an electronic meeting. This language was submitted as an amendment by the governor and approved by the General Assembly at their April 22, 2020 reconvened session. It continues to be part of the budget bill effective April 24, 2020. The Caboose Bill allows public bodies to hold electronic meetings when the governor has declared a state of emergency pursuant to Section 44-146.17 of the Code of Virginia if the nature of the declared emergency makes it impracticable or unsafe for the public body or governing board to assemble in any single location. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact business statutorily required or necessary to continue the operations of the public body and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. The Caboose Bill also has language regarding recordings and transfers, transcriptions, excuse me, of electronic meetings. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. The recording will be available to the public through the DCR website. The comments in the chat room will also be preserved as a public record. Official minutes of the meeting will be drafted and posted in accordance with regular procedures. The Caboose Bill does not allow the board to hold an electronic meeting to discuss or transact business for any purpose at all, rather than me do so as long as the agenda items included are planned to take up or statutory required or necessary to continue operations and discharge the lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities of the board. It's the board's responsibility to make that determination that the nature of the declared emergency makes it impracticable and unsafe for the body to assemble in any single location. So as a conclusion of these remarks, I'll ask for a motion from the board to make this determination. If that motion fails, the electronic meeting will have to end at that point. The Caboose Bill requires compliance with the provisions of Section 2.2-3708.2 of the code. In accordance with that section, public bodies must include a telephone number that may be used to notify the public body of any interruption in the telephone or video broadcasting of the meeting. Please don't be shy about this. We've had some disruptions recently and we want to make sure that folks are able to get back in as quickly as possible. So if there is a disruption, please contact Mike Fletcher at DCR phone or text at 804-317-8934. That number again is 804-317-8934. Additionally, if there's an interruption in the broadcast, the meeting has to be suspended until public access is restored. We'll certainly do that. Those provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, not addressed by the Caboose Bill and explained here, remain in effect, as you all know. So before we continue with the business portion of the meeting, I'm going to ask first for Mr. Fletcher to call the roll and then we will move forward with the motion on the determination. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you to call the roll.
Thank you. And folks, just so you know, on this roll call and on the roll call votes, I'll be calling in order that the names are listed on the bottom of the agenda, so that will help you know when to unmute. Secretary Strickler.
Present.
Ms. Stiff.
Present.
Secretary Ring.
Present.
Mr. Pollard. Mr. Ford.
Present.
Ms. Donner. Mr. Volk.
Present.
Dr. Casey. Ms. Iehmhoff.
Present.
Ms. Booth.
Present.
Mr. Presley.
Present.
Mr. Lozaro.
Present.
Mr. Woodley.
Present.
Senator Marston. Senator Stewart. Ms. Andrews.
Present.
Mr. Beamer.
Present.
Mr. Jensen.
Present.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Secretary, you do have a quorum.
All right, that is fantastic news. So now that we've established that, we will move on to the recommended motion that we need to present. And hopefully I can get a board member to request this. The recommended motion is as follows. The Virginia Land Conservation Foundation Board of Trustees certifies that the nature of the declared COVID-19 emergency makes it impracticable or unsafe for the board to assemble in a single location. And further, that the agenda items to be taken up at this meeting are necessary to continue operations and discharge of lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities of the board.
So move.
Second. All right, thank you. And thank you. We've got a motion and a second. So Mike, will you please fill the role?
Yes, sir. Secretary Strickler.
Hi.
Ms. Stiff.
Hi.
Secretary Ring.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Volk.
Hi.
Ms. Iehmhoff.
Hi.
Ms. Booth.
Hi.
Mr. Presley.
Hi.
Mr. Lozaro.
Hi.
Mr. Woodley.
Hi.
Ms. Andrews.
Hi.
Mr. Beamer.
Hi.
Mr. Jensen.
Now, we haven't heard any updates and I've told you already to keep their ears to the ground there while I'm told danger. I'm sure you talked to those guys, but we have.
Please mute your microphone if you're not talking in this particular meeting.
So Mr. Jensen. Ms. Powell.
Hi.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
Excellent. All right. We are going to have a meeting. So that's excellent. Just quickly, one more final word about handling participation by board members, staff, and the public. Everyone except the individual presenting materials for an agenda item will be muted. Once the presentation is completed, and we have a number of those today, the board members only will be unmuted for discussion. Staff will help me ensure the board members are recognizing if we have questions or comments and, as needed, staff will be unmuted to address any questions or concerns that I'm unable to help with. Again, members of the public can ask questions and provide input through the chat box and we will get to those as we're able and during the public comment period of the meeting if necessary. So we'll head on now to the business part of the board as outlined in the agenda. And you know, just quickly, we've got a pretty full schedule today, so I'll be brief with opening remarks. Just quickly, I wanted to recognize Secretary Ring for being here. Thank you for your continued involvement in in this important work and for being such a great partner in land conservation. I know our members of the General Assembly who serve on the board are otherwise occupied today. And it's kind of a critical moment in session, so we won't have Senator Marston or Senator Stewart with us, but we'll certainly keep them informed about what's going on. Today, we're going to hear from our interagency task force with their recommendations for grants, to applications received for the first of two fiscal year 21 grant rounds. We've received 30 applications and the task force and staff recommend funding 13 of them. We'll also announce the start of a second FY21 grant round for the remainder of the funding received in the final budget. And so we want to do a couple of things. First, Secretary Ring, I give you an opportunity to offer any remarks that you have.
Thank you, Secretary Strickler, and good morning, everyone. We know it is a very busy time and we appreciate everyone joining us and just happy for the continued great work of our land conservation partners across the state. I think we do have a full agenda, as Secretary Strickler said. We have a lot to celebrate to be able to move forward with some important projects. I know I don't want to steal Terry Lasher's thunder because he may be planning to make this introduction. We also have a new Department of Forestry staff member joining us today, so Carl, hopefully you can see Carl on the screen, who is our new land conservation manager, Carl Didier, who has come on board with us and hit the ground running. So you'll be seeing and hearing more of him. But again, just appreciate the continued collaboration with everyone. Thank you, Secretary.
Great. Thank you, Secretary Ring, and welcome, Carl. Look forward to working with you on these important items. Did any, before we get started, any members of the board have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I do see a couple of folks that are on by telephone whose lines are not muted, so we're still getting a little bit of echo. So please, please, please mute your lines. Thank you.
Excuse me, hearing no further comments, we will move ahead. The first item, obviously, as always, is to present and approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was December 10, 2020. We've all got the meeting minutes. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move. This is Bob Lozaro.
Thanks, Bob. Second.
Second, this is Kat.
Thanks, Kat. All right, motion and a second. Mike, please call the role.
Secretary Strickler. Ms. Stiff.
Hi.
Secretary Ring.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Volk.
Hi.
Ms. Iehmhoff.
Hi.
Ms. Booth.
Hi.
Mr. Presley.
I abstain. I did not participate in the meeting.
Mr. Lozaro.
Hi.
Mr. Woodley.
Hi.
Ms. Andrews.
Hi.
Mr. Beamer.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Hi.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
Great. Thanks, Mike. The minutes are approved. Next, we'll turn it over to Larry Mickelson with DCR, who's going to give us an update on the grant awards that had been recently closed. Larry? Larry, you might be muted.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the delay. I was having trouble with my mic button. As Secretary Strickler said, I will present to you the projects that have closed since the last board meeting in September. You will find a file that now has been displayed in the files that came to you by email, and it's entitled "Projects Completed Since September 20th Board Meeting." Since September, there have been four closings all across Virginia. One is a rural cattle farm in Loudoun County. Another is an expansion of a forestry easement in Sussex County. Thirdly, is a, in addition to a natural area preserve in Montgomery County, and also the purchase of a small inholding in a large park along the Potomac River in Fairfax County. So I'll speak of these four closings and also bring to you information about a project that was withdrawn during the appearance in September meeting. First project, like I said, is in Loudoun County. It's a 75-acre family-owned cattle operation which operates on soils that are designated as prime agricultural lands and soils of statewide importance. They have now been conserved in perpetuity on that project. Secondly, there's a project in Sussex County, which is in addition to the Game Lake Preserve down there, the Joseph Pines Preserve, I'm sorry. This is a nearly 200-acre acquisition by the Meadowview Biological Research Station and it was added to a Department of Forestry open space easement that already existed on the adjoining property, making the easement cover approximately 400 acres now. This property is conserved for the management of longleaf pine and supports the efforts of the Virginia Longleaf Pine Cooperators Group, whose goal is to restore longleaf pine across its natural range in southeastern Virginia. The third project that closed is a two-acre addition to the Pedlar Hills Natural Area Preserve in Montgomery County. It protects a significant map occurrence of a globally rare ridge and valley dolomite glade and a population of federally endangered smooth coneflower. So that's an important project as well. The last project that closed from fiscal '20 is a project that adds three acres to a large regional park along the Potomac River. It's the last privately owned property in the park, so now the park is made whole. It has a 250-acre shoreline along the Potomac and supports the hiking, fishing, boating, and natural and cultural resource interpretation on the site. So that's the four that have closed. There is also a project in Powhatan County that was withdrawn. It was granted in 2019. The funds were granted in 2019 and they came from the natural area preservation category. So all the funds, or so a natural area preserve is required on the property. However, changes were made to the property that make it no longer eligible as a natural area preserve, so the grant applicant withdrew the project. We will be coming to you and asking you to reallocate those funds to the natural area preservation category for the fiscal '21 Round Two, which will be discussed in this meeting. And wrapping up, lastly, there currently open one fiscal '18 project and 16 fiscal '20 projects, which are all moving toward completion. Are there any questions? If not, I'll turn it back to you, Secretary Strickler. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that review. Appreciate it. And obviously, thanks to our partners who closed on these four great projects. That's really exciting stuff. Now I'll turn it over to Sue Bubblekaya, who's going to update us on our fiscal plan for the grant round we're going to talk about today. I understand that there are some unspent funds from FY20 grant round in the historic category that we need to approve, so we can add to this grant round. Is that right, Sue?
Yes, that is what this fiscal plan shows for the current grant round to add the $31,250 that were unallocated in the last grant round and add those to the historic category.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve that reallocation of the unspent funds?
This is Kat. No move that we reallocate. Thank you.
Second by Bob Lozaro.
All right, motion properly seconded. Mike, please call the role.
Secretary Strickler. Ms. Stiff. Ms. Stiff.
Hi, sorry.
That's okay. Secretary Ring.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Volk.
Hi.
Ms. Iehmhoff.
Hi.
Ms. Booth.
Hi.
Presley. Mr. Lozaro.
Hi.
Mr. Woodley.
Hi.
Ms. Andrews.
Hi.
Mr. Beamer.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen.
Active.
Hi.
Ms. Powell.
Hi.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
All right, great. Thank you, Mike. So now we'll turn it over to you for the full overview of of applications and then we'll get to the task force to provide the presentation on the projects.
Sorry, I was muted. I wanted to quickly explain to the board members our scoring for this grant round. We, in the email we sent out with all of the attachments, we included this spreadsheet. And you can see it, which is obviously too large to share in this format. But I just kind of wanted to walk through the top categories, so you understand, have an understanding of how we score the applications. You can see in for the farmland category that we received three applications. And then as you scroll across columns, I'm going to just try to do this with as little changes as possible here. And column M is where we include the statutory category scoring. So for the Ag category, the top project got the 54 points, the second project got 55, and the third got 47. And then we add in the Conserve Virginia scoring, and that's the total specific category scores. Then the next columns, O through W, show the additional scoring criteria points that are the same criteria for all applications. And those are also scored by our interagency task force members. Then you get the total score for projects in column X. There are total project costs and then their grant requests. Column AA is a match ratio calculation that's used in the scoring. And then column AB shows the recommended grant amount for each project. And I apologize that we didn't do this sooner. Row 18 was a grant that scored well, but the applicant was the same for row 18 and 19, and they chose to use the available funding for their other following project. So that was a little confusing when presented in this table. And then we also included a Word document with a list of summaries for each application. And that was divided by category and showed the ones that were recommended for funding were not grayed out in that list. So I just kind of wanted to explain that and see if there were any questions. We'll go over each of the recommended grants with the interagency task force in just a minute. Okay. And now I'll get into an overview. If I can figure out how to work this. Again, let me just get to my PowerPoint. Go. Okay, from the beginning. Awesome. Okay. So again, as we saw in the fiscal plan for this grant round, we have $4.5 million with 25% going to DOF. Added in the $31,260 that you just approved for the historic category, which gives us a total of $3,406,250 in total funds for this grant round. And here are just some, here's more information about the grant round. It was kicked off at the DOF board meeting on September 22, and we accepted applications through November 30. After the board meeting in September, we emailed out announcements to localities, land trusts, and conservation organizations and state and local agencies. We held our virtual grant workshop on October 9, and we posted that presentation on our website and our interagency task force that twice in December for the scoring. There were a total of 30 applications received, and you can see the breakdown here with open space and parks being the most competitive, with half of the applications falling in that category. The funding requested totaled $10.5 million and the project cost exceeded $55 million. And if all projects were funded, a total of over 15,000 acres could be protected. The interagency task force is recommending funding 12 of these projects. And again, here's the breakdown, and you'll hear from each category. And the total acreage that we're recommending to protect is 12,261. And 11 out of the 12 projects have property located within Conserve Virginia, which is 92%.
So note, Sue, that the slides are not advancing.
Right. I was just saying.
Oh.
Yeah, can you go through them again? Sorry.
Yes, I don't understand. Okay, hold on. I'm so sorry. Thought it was me. What's going on?
I think that in presenter mode, it's showing, well, I'm going to try it again and see what.
Let's see. Slide show from beginning. Or maybe I have to do that. Does that work? See if you can, next one.
Huh. If you have multiple screens, you may be sharing the wrong screen.
Oh, right. It could be like the under.
Ah, I'm so sorry. One second. Let's see if I, how do I escape from that? Yeah. And go to, what else I have?
Now we've got FY21 grant round. Twelve projects, total acreage.
So it is working.
I think it's working now.
Only advance money, when you actually start the show, it's not doing. I wonder if you.
That's working if you just click on the left-hand slide.
Okay. Okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, so this was the first one showing the total amount available and all the steps that were taken. Here's the summary of the 30 applications that were received. Is that showing up? Okay. Okay. And then these are the 12 that we are recommending for funding. The total acreage of over 12,000 acres. And the 11 out of 12 are within conserve Virginia. And finally, there are a couple of requirements that our funding has to meet, or our grant awards have to meet. The budget requires that at least half of the grant funds be used for projects that provide public access. And that, then the Virginia code requires at least one-third of the grant funds be used for projects that have public body, open space easements. And so looking at the projects that we're recommending, the stats fall that 88% of the funding will provide public access, 10 of the projects. And 41% will have open space easements, seven out of the 12. Okay. All right, well, that ends my part and we'll transition into Jen presenting the agricultural category. Unless there's any questions for me. I'm sorry.
Any questions for Sue real quickly before we go to Jen? All right, hearing done. Jen, your show.
And I think, Sue, you need to make me a presenter so I can share my screen. Unless you would like to go ahead and just share the slides. Oh, okay.
I just got it. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, I'm going to try showing the slideshow and is that working? Okay, we'll see if it advances. If not, I'll go the way that Sue did. So yes, good morning. I'm Jen Perkins. I'm with the Office of Farmland Preservation at VDAX. And I am pleased to share with you the two projects that the interagency task force is recommended for funding for the farmlands category. So the first project was submitted by the Piedmont Environmental Council. And it's entitled Farmland Protection Along the Blue Ridge Turnpike. So this property is 451 acres in Madison and Orange Counties. And you can see them outlined in red. And I'm not sure how well you can see the legend here, how well you can read it. But this property is located adjacent to numerous easements and other protected lands, which are the ones that are crosshatched in white. And then it also intersects with a number of different conserve Virginia layers, including the ag and forestry layer, which is yellow. The cultural and historic, which is in pink. The scenic, which is purple, and you can see that both along Route 231, which is going north-south, and Route 20, which is east-west. And then water quality in blue. So to touch on some of the unique characteristics of the property, this farm is located in a prominent view shed identified in the Journey Through Hallowed Ground Management Plan. And a portion is within the Madison Barber Rural Historic District. The property has frontage on both Route 231 and Route 20, which is the Blue Ridge Turnpike and Constitution Highway respectively. And those are both Virginia scenic byways. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the area, these roads intersect basically at Somerset. And Route 20 is the road that if you followed it east from these properties would go by Montpelier. So the property has 2.3 miles of perennial and intermittent waterways within the Rapidan River watershed, including on Blue Run and the Rapidan River. And the landowner has already worked with the Soil and Water Conservation District to fence buffers of 35 feet on intermittent streams and 50 to 100 feet on Blue Run and the Rapidan. So here's a picture of some wetlands. Of these buffers, approximately 1.1 miles of them are within the Natural Heritage Designated Area called the Rapidan River Blue Cedar Barber Runs Stream Conservation Unit, which is where the federally threatened yellow lance mussel is known to occur. And I also want to highlight that this project is a working farm with 43% of the property containing prime soils and soils of statewide significance. The farm is used now for producing beef cattle, hay, and silage for corn. And the landowner has been very proactive in his conservation efforts already and has implemented multiple best management practices. In addition to fencing the buffers, they've also installed livestock watering troughs. And they've implemented rotational grazing practices. And I also want to note that this is a great example of a project leveraging funding. The VLCF funds will go as a portion of the project along with an NRCS agricultural land easement or ale grant, as well as private donation and landowner contributions. And so we recommend funding this project in full for the $315,000 that they requested. So the second project was also submitted by the Piedmont Environmental Council. And it's called Farmland Protection Along the Robinson River. So this is another great project. The property is 592 acres located in Madison County. You can see it's adjacent to another easement, again, crosshatched in white. And it has a significant intersection with the conserve Virginia water quality layer. And on this map here, where you can see on the north and east of the property, where the red and the blue overlap, that's all frontage on the Robinson River. So protection of this property will protect 2.25 miles of permanently vegetated buffers on the Robinson River, 2.26 miles along intermittent tributaries, and six acres of wetlands. The property is also visible from two state roads, as well as Skyline Drive and Shenandoah National Park. So again, the landowners have worked extensively and been proactive with their conservation efforts. They have worked with the Soil and Water Conservation District to plant buffers and have allowed students out to participate for educational purposes. And the deed actually will allow for limited public access for education and research purposes. Also of note, in 2019, the Soil and Water Conservation District awarded the landowners a forestry award for outstanding forest management and reforestation efforts. This property is also a working farm and it has been in the family for over 100 years. It's currently used primarily for producing beef cattle and hay. 56% of the farm contains prime soils and soils of statewide significance. And again, as I mentioned, proactive landowners with conservation, in addition to the extensive buffer plannings they've done, they have also installed livestock watering troughs and they employ rotational grazing practices. This is another great example of leveraging funds. VLCF, again, being used to augment an ale grant and then private donation and landowner contributions. And we recommend funding this project with the remaining funds in the farmland category of $106,875 of the $392,000 request. So those are the highlights and I'll open the floor to any questions.
This is.
This is Jen. Any questions?
Mary Carson. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead and say.
This is Mary Carson. Steph, I just wanted to ask a question that's really a kind of a procedural or policy question. And I just want to say at the outset, these are wonderful projects and seem like they're checking all the boxes. My question is related to the kind of double up of the one organization to receive all the funding in this category. And absolutely no disrespect to the Piedmont Environmental Council. I think everyone understands that they do excellent work. But I wonder, do we have a board obligation to distribute the resources amongst other organizations or applicants? Just some guidance on that would be helpful to me.
Clyde, do you want to take the first crack at that question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Secretary. I'd be happy and thank you for that question. So, you know, I guess when you look at the process as a whole, while we do have, in this case, you know, the two top two scoring projects are one organization. You know, our effort, I think if you look at it, the totality is that there are numerous organizations, both as well as state agencies that are going to be grant recipients. It's maybe a little unusual that the top two were the same organization in a category like this, but we don't have any prohibition that, and again, with the interagency team, you know, all of these projects are competing, you know, against all the applications. So maybe a little unusual that the top two in this category are the same organization. But I think, as was evidenced by Jen's presentation, these are pretty outstanding projects. So, Mr. Secretary, I hope that helps to answer the question.
So just to put a final point on it, Clyde, we're, while we strive to, I guess, diversify our portfolio, for lack of a better way to put it, we're under no obligation to and, you know, are looking for kind of the best conservation value we can get. And in this case, it happens to be that the two best projects, it looks like by a fairly wide margin in the farmland category happen to be PSC projects. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. I think that's a very good characterization.
Good.
Yeah, that's helpful background. And I, you know, the second reason why I asked is that in the battle, or excuse me, historic area section, we got the same thing going on doubled up. So Shenandoah Valley being one and two, and American Battlefield Trust being three and four. And I understand that that is likely an issue of how many organizations are working in the battlefield area. But there are two additional, or I guess it's just one additional. Anyway, I'm just bringing it up. I just wanted to be sure I understood.
No, thanks, Mary Carson. It's a good point. It's something that I think we should all be keeping our eye on because we do want to make sure that, you know, we're getting funds out to, you know, diverse cross-section of groups in the Commonwealth that are trying to do good work. And I guess, Clyde, I would just say to you and staff to be cognizant of that, you know, as we're going forward into, into the next review cycle. Any other questions? Okay, sounds good. Hearing, hearing done. Let's move on to the next presenter, which is Terry Lasher to talk about forest land preservation. Terry.
Thank you, Secretary Strickler, Secretary Ray, Mr. Christman, and members of the VLCF board. It is a pleasure to be here this morning to talk with you about the forest preservation category. As Secretary Strickler mentioned, my name is Terry Lasher. I'm the Assistant State Forester for the Virginia Department of Forestry. And in the place of Mike Santucci, when he took a leave from the agency, I was able to step in and fill the void here with ranking the VLCF applications. And I want to commend the staff at DCR and the partners on the IAT for helping me through this, as this was my first attempt. And they were very gracious with their time and their expertise. And I want to thank you very much for, for that. This project is, basically, there were, there were four projects within this category. This being the leading qualifier. It is the Eastern Shore Forest Conservation Initiative. The applicant is the Department of Wildlife Resources. This project is, as mentioned in the title, on the eastern shore. It is primarily in Akimak, but also does have portions residing within Northumberland County. The total project acreage is 8,654 acres, spread across 65 different parcels. What makes this somewhat unique is of those 8,654 acres, 7,286 are currently forested. 6,000 of them are in wetlands. 79% of the area is protected landscapes within the conserve Virginia model. 33% are in flood plain and flood resistant, resistance layers. 6% are in habitat and ecosystem diversity layers. And it provides protection of habitats for many federally listed species to include sea turtles, bats, insects, birds, ducks, and many more. The total project size, as I mentioned, is the 8,654. It does provide public access. There's access for approximately 2 million people within a 60-mile radius. Much of that is some underserved communities as well. Consists of 14 miles of intermittent streams and six miles of perennial stream protection. And it brings together nine other sources of funding. As Jen Perkins had mentioned, this is a good example of leveraging funds. The total project request for this was 500,000. Did not have 500,000 this year within this category, but we will be allocating the total package of $4,218.75 to this project. Total project cost is in the ballpark of almost $11 million. The wildlife habitats on this property are something that will need to be improved. There are forest management plans on the, on the property. And where there are not management plans, they will be updated or created to reflect the needs of what some of the migratory species that this property is trying to target. And in addition to the public access piece, there are several other large pieces of property that are in proximity or adjacent to a proposed new wildlife management area that will be part of this. Those are the Doe Creek Wildlife Management Area, the Saxis Wildlife Management Area, Parker's Marsh, Mutton Hump, Fenn National Area Preserve, and Shingate National Wildlife Refuge. This was old champion, or not, excuse me, not old champion, old Chesapeake property. So the majority of it is some industrial pine. That does get changed over time. There is a proposal to use the forest industry to increase some of the access, as well as some of the habitat requirements for the property. There are 60 different priority species of migratory birds that will need to have some sort of habitat improvement. There is a proposal within the package to address the 7 to 10 million different migratory birds that access this location during annual fall migrations. That's all I have. Are there any, any questions?
Hey, Terry, this is Jay Ford. First of all, I think we can all agree that this is the best project. And so I want to thank you for the eastern shore. Second, I do have some questions. If you could go back a slide. I found myself in a migratory bird presentation where I learned more than I thought I would ever know about the energy stores that migratory birds take on on the eastern shore. And in particular, how important a sassafras tree is. So what my questions are to this section is, I guess I have a couple. First, what is the land board funding here? Are we funding purely acquisition? Or are these funds going towards some of the work to take these pine stands and make, improve their wildlife habitat values?
That's a great question. It is my assessment that it is going towards the acquisition in that the funding for improvements to habitat will be done through forest management activities. But I will default to Becky Gwynne, if she is on the call, for clarification on that.
This is Becky Gwynne with the Department of Wildlife Resources. That's correct. The request for funding from the foundation board is just for the acquisition owner of this initiative.
So we're acquiring, this would, this would be an acquisition. But what is, how does the forestry? I guess the phrase you keep using is throwing me off a little bit. Are we timbering this property and then replanting it? Is that the plan here?
The long-term plan for these parcels, and there's 65 of them comprise the 8,600 acres. And our long-term plan for them would be to, over time, harvest the industrial pine and replace it with more native vegetation conducive to the needs of the migratory birds and other wildlife that would benefit from a more natural forested habitat in that area of Virginia. So the, the intent is to keep it as forested lands.
Okay. And a follow-up in this summary statement on this, there's reference to recreational access. How does that factor in with timbered properties?
The Department of Wildlife Resources Wildlife Management Areas are, are all open to public access. We do, on occasion, as you see in the, the image that is on the slide, on the screen right now, some of our properties do come with existing trails provided, which allow for administrative access. But typically, what we have envisioned for these properties on the eastern shore would be to provide some peripheral light parking opportunities for wildlife watching, recreational hunting, hiking, other kinds of outdoor recreation. And we don't have any conflict, we've never had any conflicts with our properties and the ability to provide public access, outdoor-related recreation, and manage timber or affect other wildlife habitat management practices on those properties.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions, other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more piece of Mr. Ford's question. The funds that are provided in the Virginia Land Conservation Fund are restricted and can only be used for either fee simple acquisition or purchase of easements. So, but, you know, a lot of, many times, and this is a perfect example, where the recipients of those are also as part of both the easement as well as, you know, their grant application or submitting a management plan. So they are going to be, you know, responsible. So the VLCF will be used for the acquisition. But the, the grantee is then going to be responsible for, for the management and ongoing stewardship of the, of the, of the properties.
Thanks, Clyde. That was my understanding. But the way it was phrased, and locally here on the shore, the way this project's been talked about, the really unique feature has been in improving these existing tracks specifically for migratory birds. So I think that was a little confused in the narrative.
Apologies for that, Mr. Ford. All right. Other questions on, on this? Terry, just real quickly, I obviously love this project as well and am very familiar with it from, from talking to DWR about it through, through the process. But the, the DOF application for Three Creek also scored really high. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that, that project and kind of where we are and what the future prospects are for, for that track?
Yes, thank you, sir, for that opportunity. They did score relatively closely. These two projects, respectively, one was 144 and a half points. The Three Chops Creek, it was 130 points. And then the other two projects fell off significantly from there at 86.4 and 52.7. That project, we did, we did talk with the donors about that. And really, what we just decided to do was have that be resubmitted later. They needed a full asking amount for that project and could not take a deduction or a significantly less amount of VLCF funding to make that project go forward. We do anticipate that we will be submitting that project in the next grant round. That is forthcoming.
Got it. Sounds good. Thanks. I appreciate that, that clarification. And I know Secretary Ring introduced Carl Didier earlier, but I've got it on my agenda here that we wanted to give you an opportunity or Carl an opportunity to stay high. So I'll sort of, for that, before we move to the next presentation.
Yes, thank you very much for that as well, sir. Carl Didier is our new Forestland Conservation Program Manager at the Department of Forestry, filling the very big shoes of Mike Santucci. Carl comes to us from the Rainforest Trust, as well as some other entities. And I will let Carl regale you with the stories of some of his experience. But we anticipate and hope that Carl will be joining us at, at many different VLCF and conservation events here within the Commonwealth. So Carl, if you would take a moment, sir.
Sure. Thank you very much, Terry. Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. I'm very happy to be here. A real quick introduction. I'll keep it short. I am a wildlife ecologist and forest ecologist by training. I went to the SUNY ESF in Syracuse, New York, and did my masters and PhD there. My PhD was in forest ecology in the Adirondacks, looking at the effects of disturbance on understory plant communities and regeneration. After finishing my doctorate in 2003, I went to work for the private sector NGO sector in international forest conservation, working for about 14 years for the Wildlife Conservation Society. Six of those years I spent in Brazil, trying to conserve tropical forests on the ground. And the rest of the time, I spent supporting projects all around the world in terms of project planning and decisions about where to invest resources. In 2018, I started working at the Rainforest Trust, which creates protected areas through government designation and purchase to conserve tropical forests around the world. So I'm starting here with a large learning curve to learn about Virginia and how conservation is done in Virginia. But I'm very much looking forward to learning about the state's amazing natural resources. And I'm basically very happy to join you all in conserving Virginia's natural resources and working lands. Thanks very much. Look forward to it.
Fantastic. Well, thanks, Carl. It's great to have you on board. It sounds like you've got a wealth of a really interesting experience that we can tap to the benefit of the Commonwealth. So, so thanks again. Looks like Mary Carson, do you have some questions before we move on?
Yes. Oh, yes. Thank you. So I have a question about, since you asked a question about the Department of Forestry project listed here, number two, I had a question about the Ducks Unlimited project, the Nansuman Cross Swamp Acquisition for the City of Suffolk. You know, this is in, in my district area that I represent. And as a native of Suffolk, I'm particularly interested in this project as it will help create some protection around the dismal swamp area. And, you know, we're all looking to expand the dismal swamp wherever possible. My, my concern is that this application scored zero under conserve Virginia. And, you know, certainly don't need to go into the details because it's not staff recommended. But it raises a larger issue that I plan to bring up later in the meeting about conserve Virginia and how it is an important resource. And I definitely support its use in prioritizing the direction of state resources, especially this board. But as we've discussed in earlier meetings, there are concerns with relying on the tool's accuracy, you know, completely and without fault because it is a tool viewer that has error in it. And I just wonder if we can create some, some sort of process, which we've talked about in the past, that would allow applicants like this one for Ducks Unlimited to make the case for why they, the layers might not be accurately reflecting the values that should be present in conserve Virginia. If you've been in this area, there's just no way that there would be no overlap in conserve Virginia. So I just, you know, bring that up and encourage us to kind of think about how the tool is so, such a wonderful resource and, you know, tool for our state. But it is imperfect, and that's okay. And we need to have some backstops for organizations that are presenting really cool projects to kind of, you know, make the case and have their, you know, have the layers be evaluated. And I am speaking about, you know, specific layers. And, you know, obviously, water quality should be addressed in this project, but also the resilience and floodplain layer. You know, I did a quick search of Norfolk and Hampton and the areas represented by my district. And, you know, if you, if you submitted a project in the city of Norfolk, it wouldn't meet the flooding and resilience layer for conserve Virginia. And as, you know, someone who specializes in that field, you know, it, every part of our region should be captured in that layer within reason. So I just want to raise that issue, and I apologize if it's bad timing for that discussion. But, you know, I think we need to get that subcommittee moving and talk about how the grant manual can be updated or, you know, reflect some sort of different process for applicants.
Yeah, Mary Carson, thank you for, for those comments. It was certainly something that I noticed when looking at this, this project too, because I knew Ducks Unlimited had been working on this. And, you know, we're, as you know, conserve Virginia is a living, breathing tool. And we, you know, want to hear from anybody about any potential additions or tweaks to it, including Ducks Unlimited. We'd be happy for them to, you know, to, to connect with, with our folks, you know, in DCR and talk about this project. And we're happy for that to happen in advance of an application coming in. So, you know, I hear you definitely want to continue to refine it. Clyde or Jason, I don't know if you've got anything or Josh to add specifically on the DU project and why that one, you know, didn't, didn't score. But if you do, great, you know, we can talk about it a little bit now. If not, maybe we can handle it offline.
I'll just say, this is Jason Bullock with DCR Natural Heritage. That it's a great thing to bring up. I appreciate it. Part of conserve Virginia is, as Secretary Strickler said, making sure that it's an accurate representation of the highest conservation priorities in the state. So it's a living tool. And we continue to work with data sources to keep it up to date. To answer your question, we would take digging in a little bit. And, and we'd be glad to do that at some point, to look at the inputs to that category. And I am sure we can find an answer as to why those areas are not in the current version of conserve Virginia.
Mr. Secretary, I would just add, I would just add as well, and just looking at the scoring, even if this project had gotten the maximum score in conserve Virginia, it still would have been below the, the second highest scoring project. So it wasn't just the conserve Virginia layers. But as Ben mentioned, we're continuing to look at ways that we can improve conserve Virginia. So certainly be happy to look, look at that. But, and the other thing I can say too is, and obviously, you know, encourage Ducks Unlimited to come back and apply again. Sometimes, I mean, the, the, these projects are scored based on what we know and what information is provided by the applicant. And sometimes, you know, we'd be happy to have staff look, you know, talk, sit down and talk with the applicant of ways that they could look to, you know, if they didn't fully articulate some of the other information in the grant. Again, we can only score based on what's presented to us. And so that would be my two observations there.
Yeah. So Clyde, that, that's an important point. I mean, while, while we are able to look at the, at the viewer to, you know, to identify lands that are already in conserve Virginia, we are to some extent, I guess this is kind of a question, are we to some extent relying on information provided by the applicants to make the case that they are, you know, within one or more of those categories? And, and the instruction for applicants to do that is in the grant manual, is that accurate?
I see Sue nodding her head. So yes, you know, obviously, you know, the looking, the applicants know what the maximum score is within each category. And yes, absolutely, it's incumbent on the applicant to make sure that they're presenting the best argument that they can, or best case, I should say, that in terms of, of each of the categories that the application's being scored on.
All right. Well, so anyway, in my mind, this is, this is a great flag. It's something we should, should look into a little bit more and see, you know, how we can, how we can do better and perhaps how the, we can help the applicant, you know, get a better application put together for the, the next time around. Any other questions on this category? Okay. Thanks, Terry, for the presentation. We'll turn over to Wendy Musumetschi for the Historic Preservation category. And then I think we're going to roll right into the DCR Natural Area and Open Space category with Jason Bullock and Crystal Maggely.
Thank you, Secretary Strickler. My name is Wendy Musumetschi. I am the easement program coordinator at the Department of Historic Resources. I, this will be my last VLCF meeting as a member of the interagency task force. I've been on the task force for over 14 years. And we are going to be transitioning this responsibility to my colleague, Carrie Richardson, who also works with the easement program at the Department of Historic Resources. So I may still tangentially be involved in helping Carrie transition over, but this will be my last meeting. I also, to add quickly to the conversation we just had and to Vice Chair Stiff's question earlier, within the historic area preservation category, there were seven applications that were distributed among three different applicants. And I do agree that to, to, to a large extent, the content of the application itself certainly does impact the scoring and whether the application actually addressed the questions for that particular category. And I think it would also be beneficial for the task force as well when we do our outreach with grant workshops and other types of outreach to encourage applicants to contact, you know, whatever category it is, to contact their staff ahead of time and talk about the application because that, that can make a big difference. Okay. And moving on, the first project I am going to present today is the Brill Tract. The applicant is the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation. Located in northwestern Warren County, just east of Strasburg, the Brill Tract contains approximately 72 acres and is within the boundary of the Cedar Creek and Bel Grove National Historic Park, as well as the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields National Historic District. It falls entirely within the core and study areas of the Cedar Creek Battlefield, which has been given a preservation priority rating of 1.1, Class A, in the report on the nation's Civil War battlefields presented to Congress by the Civil War Sites Advisory Commission. Sites with the priority rating of one are those that have a critical need for action in terms of their preservation. In addition to, to its historic battlefield landscape, the property also includes a 1920s bank barn, which is shown in the photo on the right, two recorded archaeological sites, which contain features associated with Native American occupation of the property, as well as the military fortification associated with the Civil War. Other resources present on the property include frontage on two unnamed intermittent streams that drain, drain to Cedar Creek and 25 acres of forested cover. The property intersects with the cultural and historic preservation The property intersects with the cultural and historic preservation layer, the protected landscapes resiliency layer and the water quality improvement layer in conserve Virginia. Um, as you can see here on the map, the, the property is roughly in the center of the map and it is surrounded by 472 acres of conserve lands. An acquisition of this property will link these lands together into a 544 acre preserve tract. The Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation plans to construct a trail linking this property with two SVBF owned properties to the northwest and the southeast and install signage to interpret the property as part of the Cedar Creek Battlefield. It will be open to the public. This project is a fee acquisition with a, with an historic preservation and open space easement to be held by the Virginia Board of Historic Resources. The interagency task force recommends fully funding the grant request at $411,807. The next project is the Stoner Keller Farm in Shenandoah County. The applicant again is the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation. Located in northern Shenandoah County in the town of Fisher's Hill, the Stoner Keller Farm contains approximately 120 acres of land. It includes the circa 1772 Stoner Keller Mill, which is shown on the right, and the 1884 Stoner Keller House, which is shown on the left. It also includes four other buildings and structures with, which are listed on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places. Archaeological resources on the property include a site associated with Native American occupation, the mill race associated with the mill, a late 18th and early 19th century cemetery, Civil War period earthworks, as well as historic road traces. The property is also entirely within the core area of the 1864 Fisher's Hill Battlefield, the study area of the 1864 Cedar Creek Battlefield, and is also within the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields National Historic District. The property also contains approximately 60 acres of wooded cover and 61 and a half acres of open land, portions of which are actively used for agricultural purposes, primarily cattle grazing. It contains 5,440 feet of frontage on the north and south forks of Tumbling Run, as well as Tumbling Run itself, which are tributaries of the Shenandoah River. The property, as shown on the map, are than one mile of the applicant's planned Fisher's Hill Battlefield Interpretive Trail and will connect with adjacent battlefield properties subject to easements held by both the Virginia Outdoors Foundation and the Virginia Board of Historic Resources, as well as additional lands owned by the applicant. The trail system will be used for historic interpretation and educational purposes and will be open to the public during daylight hours. This project is an easement acquisition with the historic preservation and open space easement to be held by the Virginia Board of Historic Resources. The interagency task force recommends fully funding the grant request at $242,170. And our third project is the James Jackson Tract on the Wilderness Battlefield in Orange County. The applicant is the American Battlefield Trust. Located on Route 20 in Orange County, the James Jackson Tract contains approximately 36 acres of land. The property is used for residential and agricultural purposes and equestrian activities. It falls entirely within the core and study areas of the 1864 Wilderness Battlefield, which has a preservation priority rating of 1.2, Class A. Critical actions during the May 5th, 1864 Battle of the Wilderness occurred on and across the Jackson Tract. The property is also partially within the study area of the Chancellorsville and Mine Run Battlefields. Additional historic resources on the property include a mid 19th century spring house shown in the center photo, as well as a cemetery. The property contains open pasture land, as well as 19 acres of forested cover and 573 feet of frontage on an unnamed intermittent stream. It also intersects with the cultural and historic preservation and the water quality improvement categories in conserve Virginia. The Jackson Tract adjoins the legislative boundary of the Wilderness Battlefield Unit of the Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania National Military Park, which is owned and operated by the National Park Service. Preservation of the tract will protect significant view shed along Route 20 and offer opportunities for interpretation of and education about the Battle of the Wilderness to visitors. This project will be a fee acquisition with a historic preservation and open space easement to be held by the Virginia Board of Historic Resources. The interagency task force recommends funding this grant request with the remaining funds in the category at $221,023. Any questions?
Questions for Wendy? All right, uh, hearing none. Wendy, thanks. Uh, well, we'll kick it over to you, Jay. Jason, you're on mute.
Okay. Now let me get this to presentation. I think I'm having a similar problem as Sue earlier. Uh, so what I'm going to do is just let this suffice, but try to maximize your viewing pleasure. Everybody see that? Okay. 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 Um, good morning. Uh, thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here. Good morning, Secretary Strickler, Secretary Ring, Director Christman, and the members of the board. I'm Jason Bullock. I'm the director of the Virginia Natural Heritage Program, which is a division of DCR. I am happy to share with you today a proposal for a project that, that marks the beginning of a, of an historic conservation opportunity for Virginia, uh, for its protection of natural resources, for its landscape scale, and for public benefits, the natural heritage and historic interpretation, education and public access opportunities. This project is the single proposal that was submitted to the natural areas category and it was submitted by DCR Natural Heritage. So here's a map, pretty busy. I'm going to try and walk you guys through it. Uh, the project is located in South Side, Virginia and Halifax County. This property is privately owned. The current landowner endeavors to see the property permanently conserved and managed for the unique natural heritage and cultural resources that are there. It's situated, uh, north of the Dan River, uh, adjacent to the upper reaches of Carr Reservoir. It's adjacent and to the west of Stanton River State Park. This 2010 acre subject parcel is roughly the eastern third of one of the largest single owner privately owned parcels remaining in Virginia, uh, all of which is on this map, about a 7,400 acre parcel. Now this proposal is seeking $860,000 from this VLCF grant round, as well as the required match from the current LWCF grant round. Uh, in terms of conservation values here, the, the proposed project aligns with the goals of conserve Virginia and specifically the natural habitat and ecosystem diversity and the protected landscapes resiliency categories. Aligns with the goals of the Halifax County Comp Plan, Stanton River State Park Master Plan, the Natural Heritage Plan, as well as values are, um, parts of the Tobacco Heritage Trail, the Southern Virginia Wild Blue Way. It's a high priority for conservation, the South Atlantic LCC Southeastern Conservation Blueprint, and is seen as valuable for conservation by the International Dark Sky Association. Uh, proposal came with letters of support from the town of Halifax, Sound South Boston, Halifax, Halifax County Tourism, Native Plant Society, and Astronomical Societies in North Carolina and Virginia. Um, all that pertaining to the, the subject 2010 acres. But for a little more on this, on the overall property, this proposal is, can be considered phase one and, and initiative, an effort to acquire all of the 7,400 acres. Um, a unique opportunity for Virginia and very much for South Side. This area exhibits a relatively light degree of land use impact since European settlement. Um, there's, and therefore great potential to restore pine oak savanna conditions here that were once used and maintained by Native Americans. Uh, the, the area is rich in Native American history, as well as pre-Civil War and post-Civil War slavery, African-American history. Um, and there's great opportunity here to allow the public to visit, to step back in time through interpretive hikes or drives and learn about the history of this property and of Virginia. Uh, there are miles of trails and forest roads on the property already. Uh, water access to Bannister, Haiko and Dan Rivers, as well as the Carr Reservoir. Uh, and protection will expand water quality benefits to all of those water bodies, as well as the Roanoke River and Lake Gaston, as we know, and ultimately the Albemarle, uh, Pamlico Estuary. Um, there's also scenic river frontage and frontage on a state scenic byway. And lastly, the, the forested core, um, that this would protect is of highest ecological integrity rank that is possible. And ultimately, the protection of this, uh, entire, um, property would result in over 40, 40,000 contiguous acres of federally or state owned and managed conserve lands. Okay. From a natural areas category standpoint, from a natural history standpoint, this property is a gem. Um, natural heritage staff from DCR have, inventory biologists have been conducting fieldwork there spring and summer of 2020, uh, mapping many rare plant and animal commu-, uh, species, as well as natural communities. So what makes this property special is it's, uh, one of the things is that is at the northern extent of a, of a geology called Virgilina Greenstone. And this geology gives rise to hardpan soils. And they have a unique drainage, unique drainage and mineral, uh, characteristics that result in a suite of rare plants, um, and rare natural communities that are exceedingly rare in the Piedmont of not only Virginia, but the United States. A lot of the, what we know about hardpan soils, we've learned at Difficult Creek Natural Area Preserve, where our restoration and prescribed firework has resulted in, uh, great success in, um, these species reemerging from seed bank, um, bud bank, root stores, et cetera. Um, and therefore it's a, it's a very feasible, um, and prime opportunity to restore the open understory savanna habitats that, uh, were characteristic of the region and that Native Americans used and lived in. Uh, so here on the slide, you see a, a photo of a hardpan forest with its characteristic, um, open understory just due to soil conditions. On this property, we've also identified, uh, three state rare species. Uh, and these two pictures to the left here, uh, Tall Barbers Buttons in Echinacea Levagata, which is a listed plant species. Um, there are remnants populations on the property and we fully expect these populations to expand with management. Uh, likewise, there are numerous vernal pools in the, on the project area. Uh, these, as many of you know, provide habitat for declining amphibian species. Very few of these remain in the Piedmont of Virginia. Again, due to the historical conversion from natural vegetation to, uh, sustained intense land use change um, for agriculture and then sometimes development. So you don't get to see this a lot and, um, this property has several examples. And lastly, uh, this is a photo of, some photos of another rare natural community from the, the subject parcel. The, uh, southern Piedmont basic oak hickory forest, um, another globally rare example of this community type. Um, and another, uh, opportunity for public access that will, can be allowed on the existing forest roads and trails, uh, in this first phase of the project. So visitors can learn more, experience and learn more about these resources. And that's all I have and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? All right, uh, hearing none. Um, thanks for the presentation. Uh, Crystal, you're up.
All right, sound check. Uh, good morning, Secretary Strickler, Secretary Ring, Director Christman, members of the board and colleagues. I am Crystal McElvy. I'm the Recreation Grant Manager and the Planning and Recreation Resources Division of DCR. So just to confirm, you can see my screen? So I am presenting on the Open Spaces and Parks category. Fifteen applications were received in this category. And upon scoring, the top five have been recommended by the interagency task force for funding. And so I will be presenting an overview of the top five projects in order of ranking. And I'll try to kind of zip through this on the interest of time. So the first applicant was the Friends of the Lower Athamatics River, Folar, and they have applied for what they call the Athamatics River Trail Critical Petersback, Petersburg Gap Connection. And this is 7.9 acres within the city of Petersburg. It intersects with the cultural historic preservation and the scenic preservation categories of conserve Virginia. And, um, it is adjacent to a couple other conserve properties. This, um, consists of over 2,100 linear feet of riverfront along the Athamatics River, which is also a designated scenic river in Virginia. Recreation opportunities will include wildlife watching, fishing, bank swimming and a rest site for paddlers. They plan to provide accessibility, um, on the trails that already exist. And there are historic resources on the site, including the Battersea Canal, headgate features and views of the Atlantic Coastline Railroad Bridge. Uh, project partners include Folar, Virginia Outdoors Foundation, the Cameron Foundation and the city of Petersburg. The task force is proposing VLCF funding of $28,943. The next project is the Blackwater Conservation Acquisition. And this is, um, applicant is the city of Franklin and this consists of 203 acres. As you can see here, it can, it intersects several layers of conserve Virginia, including natural habitat, ecosystem diversity, flood plains and flooding resilience, scenic preservation and water quality improvement. The property contains old growth hardwood bottomlands and high value forest lands and as well as other significant rare natural communities. There is over 5,000 linear feet along the Blackwater River, which is also a designated scenic river. Recreation opportunities will include enjoying the natural beauty with open air facilities and installation of a non-motorcycle launch. Potential project partners include Ducks Unlimited, VOS Preservation Trust Fund, and possibly the Enviva Forest Conservation Fund. VLCS, um, interagency task force does propose funding at $375,000. BLCF Interagency Task Force does propose funding at $375,000. Third is the Rappahannock River Park. This is applied for by Culpeper County, and this is for 46.53 acres. And this also intersects four Conserv Virginia layers, including natural habitat and ecosystem diversity, flood plains and flooding resilience, cultural and historic preservation, and also scenic preservation categories. And there are other conserved lands in the area. This is a unique opportunity, but it contains already many recreation facilities, including a non-motorized boat launch, primitive campground with 47 sites and associated infrastructure, nature trails, and picnic areas. This property contains 650 linear feet along the Rappahannock River, which is also a designated state scenic river. It also meets Virginia Outdoor Plan Feature project goals of providing additional water access along the Rappahannock River Water Trail. In this portion of the river, the nearest launches are nearly 32 miles apart, and this happens to be right in the middle of that long stretch. The property is mostly forested and riparian ecosystem. There is also a half-acre stock pond on the property, and the partners will assist with creating a site-specific wildlife habitat and water quality plan to include enhancing new plant species. This does have historic features, including the historic Skinkers Ford and a residence that is partly pre-Civil War enlisted as an historic home in the county. Potential partners include the Culpeper Recreation Foundation, Piedmont Environmental Council, Friends of the Rappahannock, and the Interagency Task Force recommends BLCF funding of $210,000. Fourth is River Farm. And this is applied from the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, and this is for 24 acres in Fairfax County. This is a unique opportunity that is a public garden and event venue on the Potomac River. This is along the George Washington Memorial National Parkway and offers scenic preservation and water quality conservation value. River Farm includes more than 1,100 feet of mostly forest shoreline and will fill the community need for public river access. Intersection with Recreation Resources include the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail, the East Coast Greenway, and the Potomac River Water Trail, which are designated in our Virginia Outdoors Plan. This property has historically been known as Wellington and was once part of one of George Washington's farm. More research could be completed to verify the full history of the property, including previous Native American occupation. This property includes many facilities and amenities for botanical gardens, event venues, and nature trails that have been maintained and created by the American Horticultural Society. There are also nature trails in the meadow and woodland areas of the property. Partners include Fairfax County Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, VOS Preservation Trust Fund, and local philanthropy. The proposed BLCF funding is $150,000. And our fifth top applicant is Camp Kumbaya. And this property is also very unique, and Virginia Outdoors Foundation has applied for this. This is 44 acres in Lynchburg, it's urban forest, and an outdoor educational campsite. This camp has been providing nature programming for over 70 years, and they plan to also encompass year-round environmental programming for youth and families in central Virginia. Public trails will be available for views when summer camp is not in session. This has been a historic community keystone for children of all races and economic circumstances to gather together and learn in nature. Camp Kumbaya collaborates with more than 30 community partners for volunteer opportunities, counselor, training, and more. Recreation opportunities include fishing, boating, ropes courses, swimming pools, a learning garden, and a sports field, and this is a region that otherwise has very few nature-based parks. Partners include VOS Preservation Trust Fund and landowner donation, proposed funding of $79,807. Thank you very much. And are there any questions?
Thank you, Crystal. Questions for Crystal?
Yes, I just had a quick comment. Crystal, thanks for the presentation. I just want to commend the interagency committee as a native of the Petersburg area for the selection of the Athamatics River Trail. I think that's a much-needed area in the urban area and will offer a lot of benefits. So good job on that.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, great. Well, Crystal, thanks for the presentation. Wendy, Jason, thanks to you as well. I think now we ought to check in and see if the... Apologies. Glenda, is that you?
This is Glenda, can you hear me?
Yes, Glenda, I'm here.
I'm sorry, we're having sound issues here.
Can everybody mute, please, if you're not Glenda?
This is muted and turned down.
I'd like to speak to the River Farms application. I'm sorry, I don't know if you can hear me, so...
Again.
So turn the sound up on your computer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. We're struggling with the technology. I just want to draw my colleagues' attention to the River Farm application. In my view, this application is really a triple winner. This is a very historic property. It is one of George Washington's original five farms. It's currently, it has been owned by the American Horticultural Society for quite some time, and they have put it up for sale. And so this is a very urgent situation, and fortunately, Fairfax County and the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust and a local group have are working hard to save it and to prevent it from being developed. As Crystal mentioned, it's prime property, prime riverfront property, which is quite rare in Northern Virginia and Fairfax County, but it has historic significance, it has natural significance, it has all kinds of plants and wildlife, including nesting bald eagles. And I just wanted to stress to my colleagues that this is a rare opportunity in a, you know, a very urbanized area just to save a historic and naturally significant property.
Excellent. Thanks, Glenda. Any other questions or comments? Okay, sounds good. Gina, any other questions that we we need to address from the from the public? Okay, I'm hearing that there are none, any, no requests to speak from the grant applicants. Mary Ann Saunders did...
Sorry about that, Secretary. We are still struggling over here. Mary Ann Saunders wants to speak during the public comment session.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mary Ann, please go ahead.
Good morning, Secretary Strickler, Secretary Ring, Director Christman, and board members. In the interest of time, I'm just going to read my comments because I think that's probably the quickest way to get through. Very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm an officer on the Board of the Living River Trust, an urban land trust based in Hampton Roads, speaking on behalf of a Newton Neck Preserve Park to be located in the city of Chesapeake. I recently retired from the city of Chesapeake after 30 years in the city manager's office of focusing on state and federal relations, transportation, and the environment as public safety. The Living River Trust was created in 2004, collecting millions of dollars from dredging state bottomlands that by law are restricted to remediation of legacy contamination along the Elizabeth River. We have two organizational programs, one is sediment mitigation that I just mentioned, and then land conservation. I work on the land conservation side. After learning our submitted project wasn't recommended by DCR staff for funding, we thought it'd be worthwhile to speak today, as we intend to apply again for round two in April. It's been inspiring to hear these projects all over the Commonwealth. For someone who's sat through 30 years of city council meetings, this is a whole different ballgame here. Since joining LRT, it's allowed me to once again to engage with Chesapeake officials and our wonderful citizens for delivering the public a unique waterfront park in an urban, fully-developed part of the city. The city and LRT are partnering in this undertaking. The city of Chesapeake is working on a citywide 10-minute walk goal that encourages in placing high-quality recreational amenities within 10 minutes. This parcel also links several major parks in Chesapeake, including the Oak Grove Lake Park, the former Barrow Pit along I-64, and several neighborhoods, and will get, they have walk ability to get to the southern branches of the Elizabeth River. Newton Neck is a 90-acre oasis located on the Elizabeth River's almost 5,000 feet of shoreline. The southern branch of the Elizabeth River is also the intracoastal water, Atlantic intracoastal waterway. This site functions as a majestic green buffer between heavy industries such as a massive construction and demolition debris landfill, quiet residential neighborhoods. Over the past decades, the property has been subject to countless rezonings due to vociferous citizen outcry. Our residents want more parkland, and we want to partner with entities like the city to transform their hopes into reality. If not used as a park, the out-of-state property owners may well pursue development by right or another rezoning. We are an urban land trust, working to conserve land in intensely developed areas that experience high flood risk due to sea level rise. These unique challenges are not always reflected in the typical land conservation funding opportunities and grant criteria. I very much appreciate the opportunity to listen and learn about the BLCF grant process so we will be better positioned to apply for support, the Newton Neck Park, and this year's grant round number two. And I'd like to invite to invite the staff to come visit us, the park site in Chesapeake, and also would like the opportunity to meet with the staff at, you know, remotely to go over our application, see how we could strengthen that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. We certainly appreciate your comments and your dedication to conservation down there in Chesapeake and elsewhere. It looks like there are a lot of high-scoring projects in this category, and certainly we'll commit that our staff will reach out to you and talk about, you know, how to work on the application for the next round. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, and it'll be an opportunity to speak again later if there's anybody who wants to chime in. We're at the point where we need to move to make a motion on awarding grant funds. However, we've got the two PC projects in the ag category need to be voted on separately because one of our board members, Ms. Mob, has a conflict there. So is there any, before we make the first motion on the ag category grants, are there any questions or comments from the board members? All right, I would entertain a motion for to award the farmland category grants.
Move approval, Mr. Perry. That was Lazaro.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Mike, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Secretary Strickler.
Hi.
Ms. Stiff.
Aye.
Secretary Ring.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Volk.
Aye.
Ms. Einhoff.
It's Dean.
Mr. Presley.
Aye.
Mr. Lazaro.
Aye.
Mr. Woodley.
Aye.
Ms. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Beamer.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the grants?
This is Ken Einhoff, and I so move.
Let's jump on Woodley, and I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mike, please call the roll.
Secretary Strickler.
Aye.
Ms. Stiff.
Aye.
Secretary Ring.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Volk.
Aye.
Ms. Einhoff.
Aye.
Ms. Booth. Mr. Presley.
And Mike, that's for the other group as well.
Right, thank you. Mr. Presley.
Okay, thanks.
Aye.
Mr. Lazaro.
Aye.
Mr. Woodley.
Aye.
Ms. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Beamer.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
All right, thanks, Mike. Thanks, everybody. Glad to to get the awards out the door for those good projects. And thanks to all the applicants for your submittals, and thanks for the interagency team for scoring and presenting the projects. The next order of business and our last big item on the agenda today is moving into our next grant round to award the remaining funds or set up the awards for the remaining funds of the FY21 appropriation of $10 million. So staff pulled together the required documents to get the ball rolling on that, and got kind of the standard fiscal plan timeline, updated grant manual, and an application. So Sue, I'm going to turn it over to you now to go over those materials, hopefully relatively Sue, I can't hear you. I think others may be having the same problem.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Okay.
All right.
You're good. I apologize. Jeez. Um, now let me get back to my shared screen. Okay. Hopefully, you all can see the fiscal plan. Since our budget includes $10 million, even though we've already just awarded the 4.5 million, the budget says 10 million. Our Code of Virginia says if the amount appropriated is $10 million or more, then the funds have to be divided evenly among five categories. then the funds have to be divided evenly among five categories. So we're proposing to divide the 5.5 million minus the VOF, 25% off the top, evenly among the five categories with 825,000 in each category. Plus, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there was $500,000 returned in the natural heritage category, or natural areas category. We propose returning that to the natural area protection category, which will provide a total of $4,625,000 for this round two of FY21. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Sharing, I'm gonna share our next item, which is the, let's see, grant round schedule that we're proposing. We're proposing to kick off the second grant round today. We will announce the official opening of the grant round early next week. We'll update our website with the grant application and grant manual, and we will send out emails again to conservation organizations and localities and state agencies around the state. By the end of the month, we hope to hold another virtual grant workshop for entities that have questions about applying. And we're also going to include all the members from the IAT in that workshop, the Interagency Task Force. We're proposing a deadline for receiving applications of April 5th, and then have the task, Interagency Task Force meetings to finish scoring by early May. And then hopefully have another VLCF board meeting to approve that $4.6 million of grant awards in early June. Okay. Then I'm gonna stop sharing that, close that, and then. We shared with you in the email, the draft of the grant manual. And since it's the same grant round, we just didn't want to make too many drastic changes to the grant manual and have just proposed some technical fixes and some clarifications throughout this grant manual. We do have this statement that we added to the cover page that concerns Conserve Virginia. We understand that there's going to be some updates to Conserve Virginia. So we just wanted to let applicants or request that they send us a screenshot of their project in Conserve Virginia, just in case there's any changes made that might affect their project. And Ms. Carson, I was thinking that maybe we could also add something else here to say. And if your project falls outside of Conserve Virginia, please, and you feel that it should be in, please send us supporting information and talk with the expert in your category that you're applying within. We could add something there to address those concerns.
I think that would be helpful, and I think just even encouraging applicants to reach out to staff and talk, I think, might be helpful. You know, a lot of organizations applying for grants may, may, may not understand that that's an option for them.
Okay. Yeah, we, we try to stress that in the training, but we, or the workshop, but we understand that not everyone can attend that, so.
They can get extra points in some categories when they're visiting.
Yeah, some categories include extra points if they contact the staff and get a site visit in beforehand. So yeah, we'll encourage that for the other categories to get in touch, too.
Is this the time, is it okay to ask a few questions at this point? Or do you still, are you still presenting?
No, I'm, I can, this is perfect. I, I didn't know, I didn't really want to have to go through step-by-step the changes in the grant manual. I think they're pretty self-evident. We made some to the application as well, just for clarification and purposes. So yes, I'm very happy to take questions.
Well, well, one, I wanted to thank you for redlining the changes. It made it a lot easier to kind of see, you know, pre and post. And I guess a question I have for you, it's not really for today, but I'm wondering if longer term, there's going to be a way to migrate this to online submission? I know a lot of people end up running to Richmond at the, you know, midnight hour to get their grant application in, and I didn't know if you thought more about how to do online. And, and I've also had the comment from folks that sometimes there's fairly long narrative sections, and if there would be some direction to people to break it in more biteable chunks, might make it easier in the review process. I'd love, I'd love to hear your, your thoughts about both of those.
I think online submission or electronic submissions is fine as well. I, I guess our emails would be date or timestamp, you know, time stamped. So I, I have no problem with that. Did you all want to make that change to this grant round? Or should we propose that for the next round?
Sue, just quickly, do we, and maybe this is Clyde's question, do we have the, the ability and everything set up to be able to accept them? Or can we, by the time, you know, folks will be submitting? I'm a little bit embarrassed to say that I did not know that you didn't have that option. And I, I think we, we should certainly allow people to submit these online if there's not a good reason not to.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary, unless somebody on the staff jumps up and tells me why we can do that, I don't see why we couldn't accept electronic applications as long as all of the materials are provided. Tom, Sue, any, any reason? Mike?
We do ask for the submission to be in a PDF searchable form. So that should, you know, the, the size of that is, it shouldn't be too large. So as long as it's a PDF, that should be fine. One file. Larry, did you have any comments on that?
I think that will work.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think that will work. If it is a large file, we may have to use a file transfer service rather than an email, but I think that we can make it work.
Would we need to amend the instructions then in the, in the grant manual just to let folks know that they can and give them an email address?
Yep, we'd have to do that, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, what I would just suggest is that, as part of, assuming we have a motion to approve the grant manual, that the motion would include, a motion would include amending the grant application to allow, because right now I'm looking at the manual that specifically says it has to be mailed. So if a motion to approve this would include an amendment to allow, we just need to add email address and instructions on email, on electronic submission, which could easily be done.
Okay, I, I think that would be good to, to include unless there are objections. Kat, thank you for catching that and bringing us into the, at least the end of the 20th century. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I think the changes that have been suggested are, are good ones, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that we've not had an opportunity for the subcommittee to meet that was proposed back in the fall. You know, here's a chance, we're, we have an opportunity to weigh in directly on this and sort of offer amendments on the fly, but that's certainly a subpar process to a, a detailed conversation about the grant manual. And a really important part of that suggestion, when we discussed it in the fall, was making sure we gave stakeholders an opportunity to weigh in directly in that process. So I, I fully appreciate the difficulty in meeting with COVID, but I would really respectfully request that we try and find a, a time for this subcommittee to meet sooner, really as soon as possible. Because we're now, we've had one grant round go out the door, we're getting ready for another, and, and this has been a consistent request from stakeholders.
Yeah, thanks, Jay, I appreciate that. And you're, you're right to flag that it's been a particularly busy time going into, and now trying to get through general assembly session. And, you know, I, I think also the fact that we weren't proposing any significant changes to the grant manual this time also, you know, gave us, at least we thought we had a little breathing room here. So just to get through session, we'll certainly stand up the subcommittee and, and get folks talking about the. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Sue, do you have anything else?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you all so much, and I apologize for all of the technical glitches on my end.
Mr. Jim Beamer, I'm due to approve the, the items.
Great, thanks, Jim. Is there a second?
Second, Lozaro.
All right, Mike, call the roll.
Secretary Strickler.
Hi.
Ms. Stiff.
Aye.
Secretary Ring.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Volk.
Aye.
Ms. I'mhoff.
Aye.
Ms. Booth.
Aye.
Mr. Presley.
Aye.
Mr. Lozaro.
Yes.
Mr. Woodley.
Aye.
Ms. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Beamer.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Powell.
Aye.
Mr. Secretary, the motion carries.
All right, great, thank you, Mike. Thank you, everybody. We're, to the time in the meeting where we're about to adjourn, I wanted to first see if we have anyone in the public who hasn't had a chance to, to speak and address the board and, and who would like to. Are there any, any questions out there? All right, any questions or further comments or discussion from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, it's Clyde here. If I could just make one other quick announcement. Earlier, Larry reviewed the, the regular VLCF projects that we closed, but also wanted to mention to you, at our December 10th meeting, we approved, you might recall the Surrey Skiff's Creek, the balance of those funds. And I'm really pleased to report that you approved that on December 10th. On December 30th, we closed on the Edie, Eastman at Cedarfield Farm in Surrey County. That was at $1.1 million. And the best part is, is that you approved us 232 acres. When we got the survey back, the survey came in at 285 acres. So we actually got a bonus 53 acres on that. It's a fantastic easement. It does allow public access if any board members would like to see it. And Brian Fuller's on, see, Brian, I want to congratulate Brian. That is probably the fastest, well, it is certainly the fastest that we've ever closed a VLCF grant project, 20, 20 days from approval by the board. So I just wanted to announce that as well. Thank you, Ms. Secretary.
Great, thanks, thanks, Clyde, and, and nice work, Brian. That's a really great property, from, from what I've heard and what you all told me. Look forward to getting down there to, to see it soon. Any other questions or, or comments? All right, great, well, thanks, everybody. We will get together again likely in June to award the, the second half of, of the 21, 2021 grant round and look for folks who are, who are on the, the subcommittee to review the grant manual, look for an email from staff sometime in the very near future to get together and, and discuss that. Thanks a lot, and we will laud her.